Good afternoon and welcome. This is a special meeting of the Planning Board Princeton, January 24, 2022. Pursuant to Section 13 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this special meeting has been given by filing a copy with the Clerk of Princeton on the 21st day of January 2022. Notice of the meeting also was posted to the municipal website, PrincetonNJ.gov/calendar. Pursuant to Executive Order 107, due to the state of emergency in New Jersey regarding COVID-19 coronavirus, notice that during the declared state of emergency, all regular and special meetings of the Princeton Planning Board will be held electronically via Zoom, was transmitted to the Princeton Packet and The Times, and was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on April 8, 2020, and again on January 6, 2021. Carrie, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Capizoli?
I'm here.
Mr. Chow? Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Mr. McGowan?
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Here.
Mr. Quinn?
Here.
Ms. Sacks?
Here.
Mr. Tex Arney? Mr. Taylor? Mr. Bodigheimer?
Here.
Mrs. Wilson?
Here.
We have a call.
So if you'll permit me, I just want to say a few things first. At first, thank you to the Board and professionals for reconvening. This is unusual. And just to recap, I think we all know the memo that was generated after our Thursday meeting and went to council Friday afternoon that the Board saw and commented on. Almost immediately, after sending it to council, they were advised to disregard it until further notice. And then late Friday afternoon, a memorandum signed by our professional staff, our Planning Director, Michael Laplace, and Land Use Engineer Jim Purcell, Zoning Officer Derek Bridgers, and Senior Planner Justin Lesko, all of whom do outstanding work for this Board and this community, was sent to council and copied to the Board, our Board. And that memorandum laid out information in context that we had not seen and had not discussed Thursday night, and that staff view as decisive. But it happens, others who advise us, including our attorneys, might very well see things differently, and Jerry Mueller can speak to that. I sent around a resolution earlier today, very much draft, and if we do adopt a resolution today, it may very well look different, or we may choose not to. But I thought it might be helpful to have something to focus on when we start our discussion. So...
Madam Chair, if I might, I just received in my email a memo from Trishka Cecil, the municipal attorney. I don't know whether... It's addressed to Mayor and Council. The date is January 24. I don't know whether I received this by mistake, or... I'm no longer on council, obviously.
I was copied on it, and I asked Trishka if I could share it with the Planning Board, and she said it was up to me, so I'm sharing it with the Planning Board.
Okay, thank you, Michael.
So that's something else to throw in the mix. You know, I... It's interesting that as you stepped in, Mr. Quinn, the next little paragraph of my remarks had to do with the fact that this is a moving target. And it has been, and it still is, and I know that that's frustrating to people, and... So I apologize for that, and I just want to assure the Board that, as the officers, Tim and I will huddle and debrief with staff and attorneys and council, et cetera, and try to understand and correct process breakdowns that have led us to this special meeting in this somewhat awkward position that we're in.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Just a quick question, clarification on the resolution that you sent around, was that sent around to staff for the Planning Board members? Because I don't see a copy of that.
Oh, it was sent a couple of hours ago, I think, maybe not even, to all members of Planning Board, indefinitely, including yourself, and also to staff.
If I could indulge staff or anyone to resend that, I apologize if I...
No need to apologize. It was coming pretty late anyway, so...
I'll forward my email over to Matt.
Thank you.
And that I texted Board members to notify them, but I didn't have any contact. I don't have a cellphone for you, so I reached out to Councilwoman Sacks, but she appears to be in pain right now, so I'm guessing that... So sorry about this.
Yeah, why are you not at the hospital?
It's very... We have some business to conduct, so I'm going to do my best to power through.
That infection is not good.
I want to share a movie reference that I've been thinking about a lot lately. Does anybody know the movie The Replacements?
Absolutely.
The backup, and there's a moment when the coach is telling Keanu Reeves that the reason he wants him on his team is because Keanu, when the pressure is up, Keanu wants the ball. He's the kind of player who wants the ball. I'm the kind of player who wants to be somewhere else, but he is the kind of player who wants the ball.
I was trying to share the resolution, share, screen it, but someone have to let me do that? I don't know who hosted this. Justin?
We're seeing you and a screenshot.
Everyone should be able to share. It's all panelists, everybody.
There we go.
Okay, so Jerry, do you want to... Do you, or Jerry or Michael, I'm not sure who is the first to weigh in here.
Chair, I think Princeton heard enough from me on this to date.
Why don't I comment on where we are, kind of at the law firm end? First, in terms of the memo that Jim, Michael, and Derek and Justin sent to council, I thought it was very well done. The only disagreement I had, as a matter of fact, was the statement that SBRAB is a member, is a committee of the Planning Board. It's not a committee of the Planning Board. It's an independent board. Other than that, I think factually, it's completely accurate. There's a policy, a key policy question in it, which is the suggestion in the memo that a committee of the Board basically undertake design review functions in addition to the staff itself. There's two issues related to that. One is, can a committee have non-committee member, can a committee of the Board have non-Planning Board members? The bylaws actually provide that it can, but they cannot vote. I'm not comfortable with that at all, because we have not, Martina and I have found nothing that authorizes, basically, committees of planning and zoning boards to have non-committee members. So I'm worried about that. I'm troubled by that. I don't think they can. That's my legal opinion.
Jerry, is the MLUL silent on it?
It's silent on it. But if it's silent on it, the Board can only...
It's permissible if it's silent, isn't it?
No, no, it's quite the opposite. Basically...
And it goes to case law, I think.
Yeah, and there's no case law on it. But unless there's a source of authority authorizing the council to, you know, and the Planning Board, to create these subcommittees with non-Board members, I don't think the Board can do it, because it's all a function in New Jersey of whether there's actual authority to do X, Y, and Z, and we have not found any authority. Even with a committee of the Board, which is just members of the committee to do site design review work, I have a real concern with that as well, and it's as follows. So the committee is going to do that. I don't even know if the Board has any interest in that. The committee does that. It assumedly engages with the applicant. It's reviewing documents. And then we have a hearing where those same Board members are acting in their quasi-judicial capacity, where, as you know, and I've repeatedly lectured on this, the Board members at the hearing, and when you're reviewing an application, should only be considering evidence that's at the hearing, and you have a series of Board members who are members of the committee, who know a lot more than the rest of the Board, and have heard a lot more. And we don't know what they know and aren't telling us mainly because, not failing to disclose, but because...
Yeah, and I didn't hear, and sorry to jump in, but I didn't hear an appetite on the part of Board members last week to establish what would be purely a subcommittee of the Board to do that, to perform that kind of review. But I... Go ahead.
No, I was really finished. So those were my comments on the memo by Jim, Derek, Michael, and Justin. And at this point, frankly, I only see three options, two are alternates on the same theme, which is one, disband SBRAB and just rely on the staff, and the staff certainly has the capability of doing it. And as I've mentioned to a couple of people, if we wanted to even enhance staff's site plan review expertise, and I know Michael has a lot of it, I mean, we have Dan Dobromilsky as a consultant, who is a landscape architect, they're really site designers more than landscapers, and Dan actually is the best site designer in the many years I've been doing this that I've ever dealt with. So that's just a thought, if we wanted to go that route. And that could still be informal the way it's been now, or it could be formalized, as I said on Friday, by creating a technical review committee, which is what is called the West Windsor and Cranbury, it's called, is a development review committee, and that just gives it a little more stature. And I found that developers tend to pay a little bit more attention in that context, but that would, that could go either way. The second is to reconstitute SBRAB, try to put it on hold, which is what the resolution provides for, and I think there are ways of doing it, and Mia and David can comment on that. And that we basically craft changes to the ordinance to make the process work much better, where either by resolution or ordinance, members of SBRAB would be subject to the same ethical standards that the council and the Planning Board and zoning board are, and I think that would necessitate some resignations, because one of the standards is, if you're a member of a board, you cannot do any work on any matter in the municipality. We could also have it so that, in my opinion, there's a tremendous amount of flexibility if SBRAB is created. It could be one where we could try to set up a process where its report is considered early on, much earlier than that, where it really could be useful, where the staff should really work closely, in my view, but the staff would have to work that out with SBRAB, not have to give reports if they want, and would not have to send every site plan application over to SBRAB for its review. I think the Board can, the staff could be more selective. We'd want to set up some standards for that. In terms of aesthetics, we'd want to, obviously, if we're going to deal with aesthetics, which a municipality can do, we want to have some standards on that also, and we talked about that on Friday. So those are basically some of the thoughts that I've had about it. I think we'd want to set up a process as well, where we want to encourage, to the extent we can, and maybe all the staff does this now. We don't get many concept reviews. It may be that the developers don't care, but if you, I found if you push them hard enough, they'll come into concept review early on, and I think that would be very useful as well. So the two alternatives, you know, given the legal research we've done thus far, and it's been a very truncated timeframe, and we might find something else, but I don't think we will. I would say, you know, to go with either the staff without SBRAB, or have a, basically, reconstitute it and reformulate it, SBRAB where its functions are carefully delineated, and we don't have the kind of problems that we've had in the past.
Jerry, I would just respond to one part of that. We offer concept reviews to almost all applicants, particularly if it's a large project, and we've done a lot of them. We did a lot of them for the university. We've done them for other developers and applicants.
Have we done them for you? I don't remember any concept reviews for the...
We don't do them all the time. It depends on whether the applicant wants to do one.
Yeah, no, I know it does, yeah.
Yeah, we always offer it.
Okay, good.
I remember so clearly, we did one for the art museum, and basically, we didn't get what we wanted out of it, but we did it.
Is there... I'm thinking about the other issues other than the legal MLUL and 10B226 issues that were such problems for staff, including duplication of effort. With a reconstituted SBRAB, could their review be completely integrated with, or at least much better coordinated with staff, so that there isn't duplication of effort, or does staff's processes sort of preclude that? I don't know enough about the nuts and bolts to know whether that's a pipe dream or not. It seems to me like a combined technical and design review where, you know, the lines of communication are wide open in real time.
Yeah. Louise, I can jump in here. The lines of communication are always wide open. The thing is, our concerns are about staff time, limited staff resources, and the redundancy of review, and sometimes having contradictory review. There's been times when what SBRAB results have contradicted what staff has put in their reports. Also, it just takes a tremendous amount of time to staff SBRAB. It's like SBRAB, right now, it's like we're staffing two planning boards. We have to go to the meetings. We have to take notes. We have to do the minutes. We have to do reports. And I guess I maybe didn't express that clearly enough, but that's a lot of the real impact.
I mean, you did. It just... Yeah.
But all of that, Michael, is customary, is my understanding. Previous versions of SBRAB met without the applicants coming. They met without any staff involvement. So there's, and I don't think there's even anything in the ordinance that requires that. There's no, there's no staff liaison to SBRAB in the creating ordinance, and I think it's just custom that that's the way it's been working lately.
Well, that would be a great tweak. We could do like with the Environmental Commission, where we provide all the information, the application information to them, answer any questions, and of course, we're helpful to the members as needed, but we don't actually run the meeting for them.
Right. And it would also be a burden off of the applicants as well. They don't go to PEC either. And it's very expensive, you know, for applicants to bring their professionals to an extra meeting.
Madam Chair, Councilwoman Sacks.
Change. David?
Councilwoman Sacks has her hand up, and Mr. O'Donnell had his hand up as well.
All right, thank you. The squares are so small on my screen that I'm...
And now Mr. McGowan.
Yes. Thanks. Thanks for cutting in with that, Tim. Councilwoman Sacks, please go ahead.
Louise, I don't know if people know, but you can push the screen aside, so you can see all the squares. It's something I forget. I wanted to say that I spent a lot of the weekend hearing from the community and talking to people who had decades' previous experience with SBRAB, and it was really illuminating, and it helped me to realize that SBRAB really has morphed into something that was very far from what was originally intended. And it was interesting that many of the people who reached out because they were concerned about losing SBRAB, their experience was with SBRAB, as I said, several decades ago. And so that was really interesting to hear, and consistent with what Councilman Cohen just said. It seemed that earlier on, SBRAB was much more, it was consistent with the view of a body of citizens representing the community, the extra set of eyes that we've heard in need for. But staff were not present. It was not staffed formally by staff. It was not, the applicant was not present. They provided, took their own minutes, provided, you know, submitted their own reports, and it operated really in an advisory capacity. And that actually, I had initially was prepared to come today and say, you know, one of my biggest concerns is, well, they're twofold. One, I don't feel comfortable going against the advice of council, either the municipal council or the Planning Board council, who have both been pretty consistent in, have been quite clear in weighing in to say that the current functioning, the way that SBRAB currently functions, puts both the Planning Board and the municipality in legal jeopardy, because they have far gone beyond what is consistent with the statute and with the MLUL. And so I was going to say, if we can, you know, figure out, deal with those issues, sort of be clear with, deal with the conflict of interest, be clear with the committee that they really must operate within the framework, and I know that, I'm not trying to throw you under the bus, David, but I know that one of David's objectives this year had been, and why he was, you know, was getting, in sitting on SBRAB this year for the first time, was to work on making sure that the sphere of operations were within those boundaries that are legally permissible. It hasn't happened, I think, in the way that had been hoped, but at any rate, if all of those things, the legal concerns were dealt with, then that left the staffing concerns, and what our staff are faced with is overwhelming. We have a tendency to pass things like just the most recent stormwater ordinance and the upcoming stormwater ordinance. If you look at what that means in terms of staff, additional hours for staff, it is staggering, and we are understaffed and have been for quite some time now. So I was going to propose that, you know, there are a number of things, and I had sort of resigned myself to that, there are a number of things that we could put off. We don't have to rush into the master plan. There are a number of things we don't need to rush into this year. There are a number of priorities that we do have. The Seminary, the Franklin Site, the Witherspoon Street overlay, there are, there's a lot of, you know, finishing up our affordable housing. There's a lot of unfinished business that, and I think we on council need to, when we have our goal setting, really look at the pressure that we have put staff under. So I was going to propose, okay, if we deal with the legal issues, and I know that Councilman Cohen feels very strongly about maintaining the existing SBRAB, that, you know, that perhaps we could deal with the staffing issues by putting off some of these other, you know, big projects. However, then in hearing from so many people who had been part of SBRAB, served on SBRAB, and they were very surprised to find that it has become such essentially a second, a duplicate Planning Board, in that the applicant comes, it is fully staffed, and that is not what it had been. So I do think that if it's not staffed, if it comes earlier in the process, and also, you know, and, you know, a related concern was just that it's not a problem for big developers or the university to pay tens of thousands of dollars, which is what I understand it costs, to come before a SBRAB hearing. But we are, there are issues related to, you know, equity issues about other, you know, people of, you know, applicants of lesser means, who are not large developers or large entities, the financial cost to them, and I do feel like it ends up being the cumulative impact of our land use review process discourages smaller, you know, entities of, with fewer financial resources from getting involved in building and developing in our town. So if all of those things, all of those things really could be resolved by the committee not being staffed, the applicant, there doesn't need to be, it does not need to be a whole, you know, elaborate, parallel process to the Planning Board. So I just want to say that personally, I would be, in what I've just said, you know, I'm amenable to that, or... Yeah, as long as we could, but the caveat is that that will take some time to figure that out, sort of how to reconstitute it, and that is sort of where we went aground, and, you know, I don't, I think David's preference is to temporarily put SBRAB on hold as opposed to eliminating it and then bringing it back. And so we had reached out to Jerry yesterday to ask the question of, is it required by law that applications go before SBRAB? And he had Martina look into it and said, no, it's not required, in which case we could essentially go with the last bullet in that memo, which says to deactivate SBRAB until we can get it right. That would mean redoing the resolution that was going to come before council tonight. But I am, you know, fine with if we are basically going to deactivate it so that, you know, it would not have the current members, it would not operate, but it would still be essentially on the books until we could, you know, straighten out the legal morass. So for what it's worth, and I'm pretty agnostic in terms of whether we remove it and reconstitute it, or, but if, you know, if Councilman Cohen is more comfortable with leaving it on the books, then I'm fine with that, too.
Well, thanks. David, you know, actually, Alvin had his hand up next, and then Dave. But Alvin, with your forbearance, since Mia's comments were such a good segue to what David might want to say, I'm going to ask Mr. Cohen to go first, and then you. Is that all right?
That's fine.
Okay, thank you. David?
Okay. Yeah, so I basically want to say I would be okay with what Mia is suggesting. I think it would be preferable to disbanding SBRAB because of how busy both council and staff are. I worry that if we disband it altogether, that it will take a very long time to get it back in place. But it's not just about me. Also, you know, I've been hearing from lots of members of the public who are very distressed at the idea, you know, SBRAB is seen a little bit as sort of guardrails on the development process. And with all the development that's happening, that's happened this past year and is happening this coming year, to say that we're going to have 12 months or 15 months, or wait till the end of the master plan process to figure out how to get SBRAB up and running again, I think there's great, great concern that we will be having a year and a half or more of development without those guardrails. And so that's, I think, why I prefer, and I think that, you know, the discussion that we've had today really does lay out very clearly, you know, the couple of things that need to happen to make SBRAB functional in a way that's acceptable. I think the idea of not having it be staffed and not having developers be required to attend the meetings. I will say, it is helpful sometimes to the applicants to attend the meetings and to have a dialogue back and forth with the members of SBRAB, but I don't think it's, it should be required, right? So, you know, those kinds of changes, which actually are changes that are just administrative and don't require, don't even require council action, because they're not in our code anywhere currently, that we have to do things the way we've been doing them. Those changes, and then there's a second tranche of changes which have to do with the things that are really legally problematic about SBRAB, like the classification of applications as major minor, reviewing sign, design applications as the deciding authority, the ethical concerns about who can serve on SBRAB, those things are also well identified and easily remedied fairly quickly. And then the third thing that, you know, has to be addressed is design standards, and I do want to... you know, has to be addressed is design standards. And I do wanna make the board aware that there's right in that same section, two twenty-six, that you saw in staff's memo and also in Trishka's memo, which seems to, um, prevent uh, design review. And by the way, not just by SBRB, but also by the planning board and by HPC, there's language in there that really is limiting. But if you go down just a little bit further in the code to subsection C under two twenty-six, it gives a very permissive and inclusive list of things that the design review boards can look at. And I don't know if, uh, it'd be helpful for me to put that up or I could just read it out loud.
Why don't you put it up?
And I just wanna say that I did, uh, you know, if, we did send that to Trishka and Jerry and I think Jerry, you, you may wanna, um, place that in a context, cause.
Right, so here, here is that subsection C, which follows under what you guys have already seen. And what you guys have already seen says that, you know, actually I'll scroll up to it. Participation by the committee and the board shall be restricted to a reasonable professional review and except as provided in the following subsections, full responsibility for design shall be retained by the applicant. But full responsibility shall not be retained by the applicant for these items. And if you look at, uh, section C, it says relation of proposed structures to the environment. Proposed structures shall be related harmoniously to themselves, the terrain, existing buildings and roads and historically significant features, if any, in the vicinity that have a visual relationship to the proposed structures. And I could go on, but, uh, you can read it for yourself. There's, there is a lot. And I, and I would argue, you know, contrary to what Mia was saying, that all the SBRB meetings that I have been at actually do focus on these things. SBRB does not specify architectural style. Uh, SBRB does make suggestions, uh, about possibly fruitful avenues for the designer to explore, to resolve some of their critiques. But they don't, you know, they don't design, um, the, the product, the, the, the project. So I just, you know, wanted to, to share that to indicate, and this is not, this is not an ideal set of design guidelines, but I think, um, we can come up with something that really would be acceptable. And that, that will be, but we could even continue to hear application based on the strength of this, which is already in the ordinance and then, um, repair it, uh, going forward. So that's what I had.
All right. Uh, Mr. McGowan and then Mr. Quinn.
First, I have, I gotta say, I have a, a complaint. You can't, you know, have a document from an attorney that's gonna refer to in a meeting and not give us the chance to read it before, before a meeting. So, I mean, that's, you know, I'm, I'm uncomfortable with that. I make, I make enough errors without, you know, with a, you know, without having it. You know, the opportunity to, to read.
Yeah, and are you talking about the memo from Trishka? Because none of us has seen that.
But was there, is there a reference to?
I can clarify. It's a memo from the municipal attorney, Trishka, to the mayor and council. It was seized, I was CC'd on it. And when I was CC'd on it, I asked Trishka, and that was this afternoon. I asked her if I could share it with the planning board. And she said, I, it would be fine. I could do that if I wanted to. We're getting it out to you now. But it just came out this afternoon and it's a memo to the mayor and council.
Was that what David was just referring to when he was talking about design standards?
Uh, no, David was, was referring to sections of the Princeton code that follow directly, uh, that are, that are right under a section of the code that was referenced in the memo from the, from the.
That covered most of my, my, my comments, cause I know there was a real issue as far as design. You know, where there could be any design standards at all. Um, but, you know, if you read that section, it seems that there's a flexibility. So, uh, I have another comment about something else, but I may wait.
Okay, um, Tim Quinn?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and, um, uh, thank you to, uh, Councilwoman Sax and Councilman Cohen. Especially Councilwoman Sax, who appears to be in a great deal of pain. That's unrelated to SBRB. A couple of observations. I think that, you know, as I served as liaison to PEC and, um, those were sort of work sessions with the materials that were provided by the applicant. And if that's the model that's being followed, then it seems to me that's not a sec- second planning board. One question for Jerry that I had, first of all, those meetings, PEC meetings would be open to the public. SBRB meetings would be open to the public, correct? I don't know whether public comment is allowed at SBRB meetings, uh, as a, as a matter of course, but that is, could also be worked out where an applicant could voluntarily go uh, and ask questions during public comment. But something that Jerry said, uh, sparked a question, which was that our board has a liaison to SBRB and Jerry seemed to indicate that that puts a board member at, and we've always had it, so I'm not picking on Councilman Cohen.
We haven't, we haven't always had it.
This was the first year.
I was under the impression that the board traditionally had a, a liaison and that, uh, that Gail Omen had served in that, uh, capacity, but I could be misremembering.
Gail is in the audience, so we could ask her.
Well, I don't, I don't wanna bring her over to, without her consent. But it seems to me that, then that this board would not have a liaison to SBRB if it would give one member an unfair, if a member would be privy to the, to inform, information that all board members couldn't have. Is that correct, Jerry, that I hear?
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I think that's a, a, a good, a good point. I think it's a legitimate point.
Well, how is that different than the class two? Than Julie's being on HPC and Zenon's being on the PEC?
Because the MLUL provides for that.
Okay.
So then it's possible for council to have its own liaison to SBRB the way it has a liaison to PEC, but it would have to be a, a member of council who would not be on the planning board?
Well, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't wanna see it set up so that council had a liaison member on, uh, on, on SBRB because under the municipal land use law, a citizen advisory committee can be created. Zenon had read that section of, of the statute, which is twenty-seven. But it, it's created, uh, basically to assist the planning board and to work collaboratively with the planning board. So, I mean, the relationship is between the planning board and in, in, in that case, we went with SBRB and SBRB. Uh, although SBRB would, would be in, independent board, but it would still have that relationship with the planning board and not with the council.
Is it possible for planning board to have a, sorry to jump in with these questions when other people have their hands raised, but could planning board play a part in, um, appointing members to SBRB?
No, uh, under the.
Not at all? It has to be completely arms length?
No, I, no, the, the, the planning board can certainly suggest to the mayor, uh, possible, uh, appointees. But under the statute, under the MLUL, the mayor will appoint us.
Okay. Um, Mr. Lesko, I see you have your hand raised, Justin.
Yeah, I just wanted, oh, sorry, Mr. Quinn.
No, Mr. McGowan also is.
Yeah, I think his hand is still raised from before.
No, I think it's back up.
Oh, sorry. And, and Alvin, you're muted, so we're not hearing.
I think Justin just has a clarification.
Okay, Justin, and then, and then back to Alvin.
Yeah, I just wanna clarify for the, for the conversation that the planning board liaison position is really unofficial. It's not in the ordinance or anything like that.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Are you, I'm sorry, sorry. Go ahead, Alvin.
Oh, okay. Um, I noticed that, you know, when, when you originally, when we were originally talking about this, there were sections for a classification of sites that you attached to the, that, that still, is that still gonna be part of this? Cause I just, again, I have a, I have a couple of really, okay, okay.
Yeah, that, that, that's one of those bathwater things. That, that definitely needs to go, come out of SBRB's purview as far as I understand. Is that correct?
Yeah. Oh, absolutely. Uh, the municipal land use law says it has to be either the planning board or a committee of the planning board. But I think we need to take a, a real deep dive with respect to the, uh, classification, cause I mean, there are real, real issues with respect to, is to criteria that's used to classify and, um, and just how broadly we should use that because if you classify something as a minor, that means there's no notice and there's no hearing. And, and notice is published in the paper. If somebody, if a member of the public picks it up and within the proper ti- time appeals to the board, it can do so. Um, but I'm just very uncomfortable with, with this idea that we had, we could have significant applications, forty forty-two Tulane is a good example.
Yes, it is.
No notice and no hearing. That's, it seems to me very poor, poor public policy.
Yes, I agree. And we're not backing into that, are we?
I'm sorry, can I interrupt on that one? Because the way it's supposed to work is that a committee of the planning board recommends to the full planning board whether or not, uh, uh, an application is deemed mi- minor or major. Then the planning board has the opportunity to see it, but if it, if indeed the, the planning board accepts the recommendation of the, of the committee, that it is minor, yes, then there's no public hearing. But that, there, there, there are two shot, there are really three shots here. First of all, the committee is accepting, is, is receiving a report from staff as to whether or not there are any detrimental effects that should make, make a, an application become a major. If there are detrimental effects based on ten B two twenty-six, that list of criteria that, that staff deems are detrimental, then the committee looks at that and either agrees or disagrees with staff. If they agree with staff, it becomes a major. If they disagree with staff and wanna make it a minor, it, it becomes a minor. But at the end of the day, the planning board is the one that is approving the minor application as well. And can at that point say, no, we don't even agree with our committee. We're gonna consider this a major and, and require the applicant to go through a public hearing. The whole idea of the minor subdivision classification is to expedite what MLUL envisions are, are developments that are, are not detrimental to the community. And that's a, that's a, that's a call.
Judgment call.
It's a judgment call. And it's why it's got three different stops along the way to determine. It's, it, you know, we, we treat, we treat our applicants, when they submit a minor application, we've been treating our applicants as accepting their decision that it's a minor application. I've never done that. I've looked at these. I, I went through forty forty-two Tulane with a fine tooth comb, trying to find some reason to say, I don't believe it's a minor application and couldn't find a detrimental effect. But that's my recommendation that goes to the committee that then can say, no, we don't agree with you, Mr. Brussel. Uh, and, and that's okay. But that's the process that's supposed to happen. It's supposed to help move things along and get development that is beneficial to the community moved along the process instead of waiting a year and a half that, that some of these larger ones happen. Sorry, off my soapbox.
That's a good thing.
I still, can I, I still had two very, very, very technical things. You said review of the applications by the administrative officer. Somehow I think you need to change that word, administrative officer. Yeah, I asked last time what, who, you know, who that person was. It's all about staff.
That is the director of planning.
Okay, then it should be, then it should be.
That's Michael.
It should be.
It's a planning board, uh, uh, option.
Yeah, it should, it should be, it should be then, then the, the, by the director of planning, one.
It's, all right, it's also, it's also the zoning officer if it's a zoning board application. So that's why it says administrative officer.
Well, okay, I'm just saying, is it, if I, if I just read that, it could be the town administrator. That's, I mean, it's just, I just think you should specify what you mean when you say there. The other one, y- you have at, at various points, um, planning board or professionals. Again, shouldn't it be professional? Should it be the, the professional staff?
Just for the sake of clarity.
Yeah, yeah, uh, yeah.
Excuse me, I don't wanna muddy the waters, but I think the administrative officer per the ordinance is the municipal engineer and she has a duty to designate people as an administrative officer, which I think would be Jim as the land use engineer and he was zoning board. So I don't think it's the planner, but I'll have to double check, but.
Well, this is a great illustration that Alvin has an excellent point. We I wanna back up what Derek said in that when I came here three years ago and I was being briefed on my new position, that's exactly how it was explained to me that in Princeton. You know, right then, the land use engineer was, was functioning in that capacity. So that's what I assumed was the way it goes here. I can tell you in other towns I've worked in, it's been the planning director or the planner, but here in Princeton consistently, it's been the land use engineer delegated to, to that person.
Clarify, does this have to be clarified?
If I can make a comment, uh, Jim, I, I, I really don't agree with you. Um, the way the ordinance is set up, it's the, as we know, it's SBRB which does the classification. That's not permitted by the MLUL. But if SBRB doesn't do it, it's done by the planning board unless there's an ordinance.
Well, that was my whole point, Jerry, I'm sorry. That was my whole point. Is that SBRB is in our ordinance, appointed to do that and they have, and they don't do it.
Right.
I was talking about how it's supposed to be done under MLUL. The whole purpose is to expedite it.
Yeah, I was just, my only comment, I, I agree with all of that. My only comment, it's only a subcommittee if, if the ordinance provides it, it'd be a subcommittee of the planning board. And, and I, I really think we have to make the criteria for minor and major much simpler. And I have real problems with using the section two twenty-six criteria. Because as I've mentioned to a few people, if you think about it for a second, these are criteria that have to be satisfied by an applicant for the application to be approved, right? And if there's substantial detriment in applying any of the criteria to the plan, uh, that for me by definition means they haven't satisfied those criteria. So the, so the, the plan can't be approved. It has to be denied. So what are we doing? Classifying it as a, as a major, I think, I mean, the whole.
That made me scratch my head, I have to say.
The whole thing really needs to be, you know, tightened up with staff and, and e- even Trish's office or my office.
Uh, Mr. Cohen?
I just wanted to say, uh, also that, um, it's my understanding from Jerry that as far as these legal, um, feelings of the way we've been doing things, uh, are, are on the books. He's still, he feels comfortable issuing a formal legal opinion that would give staff and the board cover to, to handle them correctly rather than under our ordinance. So if there were an application that came in that, you know, like Jim was saying, he couldn't find something to, uh, recommend it as being minor, it, it still does not have to go to SBRB for review because we know that's not the right thing to do. And, and, and Jerry will, um, will, will issue a formal opinion to, to get us around that.
Right.
Uh, Ms. Sax?
I just wanted to, um, you know, echo the sentiment that there really are a tremendous amount of, um, there, there are various procedural details, um, that we are, that really need to be sorted out, even what we're discussing now. I wish that we had sorted these out a long time ago. I don't know why they haven't been. But, um, I, I, I'm comfortable with, as I said, deactivating SBRB. I'm not comfortable, David, with, um, you know, doing in a piecemeal approach where, well, maybe this applicant, for the time being, this application comes through in these circumstances and this one doesn't. I think that that is, if we're gonna deactivate, and I'm fine with not removing it, but deactivating it until we get these things straightened out. But I do think it needs to be. But I do think it needs to be said for the record that it is one councilperson against the advice of both the planning board attorney and the municipal attorney and two major municipal staffs, the entire planning staff and the, um, as was stated in your draft memo, Louise, and the engineering staff who strongly believe that the best course of action is now to remove the existing structure that we have and to come up with an alternate, alternate structure, which doesn't have to be a committee of the planning board. It doesn't have, it can be with council, but to spend some time sorting all these things out. And I, you know, David, I know that you've made the case, you feel comfortable with how Sprab has been operating, but just in the course of this discussion, we, it has become, I think, clear to us that putting you on Sprab this past year to try to police things, even though you thought it worked, we actually didn't even realize that we shouldn't have put you on Sprab this year. And that, and the fact that we have been operating in this sort of legal gray land is not okay. And, and I, and I understand-
Well, I mean, sorry to cut you off, it sounds to me as if the Greek legal gray area goes way, way further back.
Oh, yeah.
And I too thought that, I, I don't want to get into, you know, I, I, I think one thing that don't want to lose sight of is over the years, valuable Sprab's input has been to this board. And, um, and so I, uh, I, I would like to, to focus on sort of what we want to do right now and how we want, whether we want to, the, the board, uh, wants to adopt a, um, uh, a resolution that may look different from what was sent around in that it does not, um, envision the planning board, um, uh, appointing a committee, which this, I think this ordinance, or this, uh, resolution does, uh, throw out there. Um, and because that, because, I mean, we can continue to talk about this, I, I'm just afraid the target will continue to move. And I would like to, uh, you know, come to, uh, come to a conclusion that represents, uh, a consensus among members.
Karen, I, I, I just wanted to throw in there that we do have a clock ticking, because we are gonna have to have a Sprab meeting on February ninth unless some decision's made. If it's deactivated, then fine, we can just bring the, the agenda, the case that's on the tentative agenda for the next Sprab meeting, if there is one, we can bring directly to the planning board. If not, we're gonna have to continue, you know, conducting Sprab meetings.
Well, I, as I understand it, and I don't mean to put words in anybody's mouth, and I, and Mia, I do apologize for cutting you off so abruptly, but, uh, whether the, the question is to adopt, you know, recommend to, to council that they adopt twenty twenty-two oh one or that they, you know, replace Sprab on hold and don't just, uh, erase it and start completely from scratch, that's, those are, um, you know, neither of those is the same as, uh, go along and make changes on the fly. Um, and so i- in my view, uh, neither of the things that we've talked about doing here would envision Sprab continuing to operate, uh, you know, w- without I think we're talking about suspending slash inactivating or dissolving, not something less than one of the, one of those things, but i- if anybody disagrees, um, I would be uh, happy to hear about it. Mr. O'Donnell and then Mr. McGowan again, and then Mr. Cohen?
Thank you, um, I guess my real question is if we do the route that Louise just mentioned, we either dispend, or recommend to council that Sprab be disbanded, disbanded or placed in some suspension, is the planning board meeting the only opportunity then for the public to weigh in on an application? And to find out what's going on? Will this, whatever the staff meeting is with applicants be open to the public and have a public comment process?
Well, the, um, P E C meetings are open to the public and they see the application. Um, but I don't, I, I won't answer for, for, uh, Michael or for Mr. Muller.
And I think staff review has always been behind this, not open to the public.
Right, we, uh, we, we have, sometimes we have numerous meetings with applicants, as I've stated, and, um, so we don't have to require notice of them and all this other sort of thing on a preliminary stage. It's just a work session with, with the professionals.
And, and they're not open to the public, correct, Michael?
Correct, yes, they're here in the municipal building, but they're, they're not, or, or virtual, but they're-
Yeah, so Owen, with respect to the opportunities for the public to comment, it would be at the, at, at the hearing, uh, which is the way actually the development view pass process in, uh, New Jersey is set up. Now, they, members of the public have an opportunity to, to, to look at the files. Um, but it, that's obviously different from, from commenting publicly.
Well, I would add that, um, historic preservation reviews both, uh, applications in an historic district or in any recommended district, and that covers a lot of area.
Oh, that does cover a lot of ground, yeah.
Yeah, and can I put in another clarification? Uh, Sprab doesn't allow public comment as it is. Um, you know, obviously the public can view, but they can't comment. Uh, and that's led to some, you know, multi-day long struggles with members of the public that do want to comment and ask to show where it says no public comment. But because there's no rules of the hearing, there's not really a place to show, so it's kind of just another point of contention.
Thank you, uh, Mr. McGowan and then Mr. Cohen?
Uh, a general question, what we're deciding. Does this have to be for, like, a formal resolution? I mean, all we're doing is me, all, you know, all we're doing is making a recommendation. The council, the council can do whatever, I mean, council's the only body that has the power or the authority to either keep or get, get rid of, so I, I just, again, I said something else, it's, it seems like it'd be a little less formal, you know, wha- whatever recommendation we make.
Yes, it could be, it could be. Um, Mr. Cohen?
Yeah, I just wanted to make clear that, and this is sort of vis a vis Michael's comment about the Sprab meeting on the ninth or the seventh or whatever it is. Um, council is not, does not have the ability to deactivate Sprab tonight. There's no resolution that's been drafted, it would not require an ordinance, um, but it would require some action of council. I guess resolutions can be offered verbally at a council meeting without having been posted in the agenda, but um, I don't, I don't know that we would be able to deactivate it tonight. Uh, the only action that we can take tonight is to dissolve it or not dissolve it. You know, we could table the ordinance that's been introduced. We could hold the public hearing and vote against the ordinance that's been introduced. Um, but we don't really have the, uh, at least I'm not aware of how we would, um, deactivate it tonight. It would, it would be at the next meeting, probably.
All right, that's, that's helpful, uh, to understand, Mr. Quinn?
Thank you, uh, Madam Chair. So I'm, I, I kind of wonder what the difference is between pause slash deactivate and what's on offer in the ordinance? It seems to me that either way, the, or the current ordinance would have to be repurposed and reintroduced, uh, and then would come back to us for comment again, and then go back to council for a vote, and so given that and given the fact that as it's constituted now, we, you know, there are issues with the membership of Sprab, it seems to me that, that supporting a motion to just abolish it and with a recommendation that in, in with all due time after doing due diligence, it be reconstituted is the way to go. Um, that just seems to be, pausing it means, does pausing it, or let me, let me pose it as a question. If our recommendation is to pause and council is, tonight is not able to, council decides to pause, they would have to, what formal action would they take? And that would allow the, the February ninth meeting to proceed with the conflicts that we've already identified. So that's really kind of a, an observation and a question for Jerry. I'm not sure what the difference is between abolishing and pausing.
That's, I, functionally, I'm not sure there is a difference.
Well, and-
But can I, can I offer? Well, except if, I'm, I'm sorry, Mike, let me just finish, whoever said that.
Mr. Cohen?
If it, it was, if it was just paused, the other provisions in the ordinance would remain in effect that in theory, it would go to the, um, and the application would go to the, uh, the Sprab for, um, classification, Sprab, if it's just not being active, and, and David could explain how that can be done, um, then it cannot go to, to Sprab. I, I, what I told Justin and Michael and David, and Mia, we, we said, I was, and, and David referred to it earlier, I was prepared to write an opinion letter which said, sending these applications to Sp- to Sprab for classification as major or minor is not proper. It's not authorized by the municipal land use law. It has to, as a matter of the municipal land use law, go to the planning board. Since the planning board does not have a subcommittee, a site plan subcommittee, it would be decided by the planning board. And then that's what I'd be prepared to do in a, a, a formal opinion letter.
Uh, thanks, a- again, it seems to me that, that we're using two different, we're using abolish, pause and, uh, deactivate synonymously when they, they seem to me that, that the quickest course of action to get Sprab back on board in a way that we, as the planning board, want to be in compliance with MLUL and without ethical considerations would be to recommend that council pass the ordinance that's been introduced.
Yeah, yeah, as, a- 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 as I said, just if it's paused, you still have all these provisions in the ordinance, not just classification, a lot of other provision assigning, uh, obligations to Sprab. And if, if it was, uh, i- if the ordinance was adopted and Sprab was abolished, those would shift over to the planning board.
Another thing to sort of throw into the mix is that if the folks who have real or potential conflicts of interest on Sprab uh, step down and Mr. Cohen is, is also not part of Sprab, then they, then there is no quorum. Um, so-
Right, I, I appreciate you mentioning that, Louise, because I, I wanted to bring that up as the, um, what I had been envisioning as the mechanism to pause Sprab would be to depopulate it. But then, so that you didn't have a quorum, so it couldn't meet. But that as soon as we could repopulate it, it could start meeting again. And in the interim, we would have the ability to address some of these concerns about how it should be, uh, operating. But, uh, you know, I understand what Tim is saying. I actually have to get off, I have to go to another meeting, so, um, I apologize for, uh, leaving you guys in the lurch, but I, I think I've expressed my opinions and everybody, you know, you'll do what you want to do.
Thank you, um, David, thanks for all your work on this. So, um,
Louise, can I, Louise, can I just leave?
Yes, please.
One more thought from perspective of staff. I would just ask the planning board to please consider doing something so that staff, I mean, we feel really uncomfortable having a meeting in February, considering everything that's been raised about Sprab from a legal standpoint and from just protocol, everything. So if you could just keep that in mind, um, because it's gonna be really awkward to continue, even to have a February meeting.
Yeah, and I, I just have one more clarification, I wish Councilman Cohen was here. Uh, but the depopulation kind of thought doesn't work really either, uh, as Sprab members continue on until their replacement is appointed per the ordinance. So unless they chose not to show up, you know, I still have to set up a meeting.
Okay. Um, do we then, uh-
Jerry, you're muted.
Yeah, I, I was gonna say to Justin, I'm not sure that that ordinance provision, which you're referring to, which is kind of a generic provision that says when the term is over, unless the person is replaced, they continue. That would apply when there's, there's a resignation. I'm not certain e- either way on that one. But it, but going to Michael's point too, certainly the cleanest thing is when we get to February, to have the ordinance, um, the new ordinance in place, and it could go to the planning board. Although I'm not even sure that, what's the date, Michael, the ninth?
Yes, yes.
Now, I, I know, my understanding is, is that an ordinance, a municipal ordinance under the municipal code goes into effect twenty days after it's signed by the, um, by the mayor, which would put us out of that anyway. But I know that somebody, Justin, I think, I'm told it was you, talked to, uh, Trish, and she, she said, no, it's immediate. Is that right?
Yes, that's what she told me.
Yeah.
Which, again, I, I think it reinforces my, my belief that as valuable as, as we find Sprab and as, as members of the zoning board have, uh, expressed that they find Sprab at their meeting, and again, that, that's anecdotally, uh, I've heard, um, that the cleanest and quickest way to get a Sprab back that meets those needs and conforms would be for council to, to abolish it and then be prepared to reintroduce, to introduce an ordinance establishing a new Sprab.
Uh, um, uh, a- at the next council meeting, if possible, I mean, do you want to sort of put a frame on that, um, or timeframe? I'm, I'm looking for a way to sort of turn what you just said into a motion for inviting-
The next council's night.
Oh, right, well.
It would be a motion in, endorsing the, um, the ordinance, the ordinance.
Yeah, well, and we could recommend, we could recommend that they, that they prioritize, and I know that they have a lot going on, uh, that they prioritize the re-establishment of a conforming Sprab, for lack of a better term, I'm using conforming application.
Yeah. That, that addresses, go ahead, Jerry.
I was gonna say, it would be very nice if, um, they delegated to the planning board on the responsibility of crafting that ordinance, obviously it has to be adopted by council, but the planning board would have a much better handle, I, I think, on, on how this should work.
I like that idea very much.
Yeah, me too, I mean, I think it's something that the board would be interested in pursuing if council were amenable.
Yeah.
Mia, what are your thoughts about that?
I think the word was legally compliant, Tim, that you're looking for, illegally compliant Sprab.
Correct.
Yeah. Um, I, I, I feel a little awkward, I mean, it just feels very awkward to be potentially weighing in on something that I'm then sending to myself to re-way in a few hours. I know that's sort of how this is supposed to go, but it just does, I have to say, it does feel very awkward to me. Um, I, I do want to, at any rate, I, I will say that I'm not comfortable, I was not comfortable with the idea of dragging something out. I think that we do definitely need something, and it's clear that what we have now has gotten very, gone very far afield. Um, and I agree with, um, Mr. Quinn, that the fastest way to get there is to, um, create a, a clean slate to create what we do want, which I hope could be done expeditiously. Uh, the only thing I would add to the recommendation is, you know, potentially a timeframe. Um, I know that what people are concerned- I know that what people are concerned about is that there are many things coming down the bike. So perhaps adding something in that the, to reintroduce a legally compliant sprab or whatever it is, like within two months, within, I don't know, there's so much that's happening over the next six weeks, but I, I don't know, in the next, in the next few months, just or I don't, you know, something that would reassure people who are concerned that things are going to go on another year or whatever, which I don't think is the intention of council and I hope that wouldn't be the reality.
By the March, by the, by the March meeting? Could you say it that, that way? I'm not sure which would, you know, by, by the March council meeting.
Well, we have two meetings in March.
The second, the second council meeting. My, my, just my comment.
I leave that up to you.
Yeah, my comment on that is, I think, I think certainly acting expeditiously is really important. But at the same time, I think, you know, the staff has to, has to think through, you know, with which, whatever attorney's office is handling it, either Trish's or mine, how they want sprab to work in a way that works for them. And that's probably easier said than done. And that's not something that can be handled, you know, really quickly. Michael, do you have any feelings on that?
No, I, I agree with you though. I mean, we've got some work to do and staff, obviously, I mean, planning and land use staff, all the land use engineering staff and planning will be working with the attorneys, but it's going to take a couple of weeks to really do our due diligence on it.
Yeah, yeah, right.
And then report back to the planning board. We have to give the planning board time to review it before it goes to council.
Right.
Well, that's if the planning board crafts this ordinance, you know, which takes us back to the question that I was, you know, hoping to, you know, draw into the, the motion that if we do recommend the adoption of 202201, it, it's along with a, an appeal to the council to either let the planning board as quickly as we can with due diligence suggest an alternate ordinance or work directly, or I guess really, and work directly with council to make that happen, to, to, you know, help, help make sure that we really are, we and staff are completely comfortable with what, you know, with the new
I just got off the phone with him.
structure of sprab.
And Louise, that's not foreign to Princeton at all. There was a point in time, quite a while ago, where all the land use ordinances basically came out of the planning board and they would be referred to the council and then council, you know, would act and either adopt them or modify them or whatever. And it's not foreign to a lot of other towns as well, where it's at the planning board side that, that these ordinances come forward.
So Tim, I didn't mean to put words in your mouth, but are you making a motion?
So I would, and if I forget, forgotten anything, I can't say, I can't claim burnout because we're in matinee mode here. I would say that I would move that council recommend, that the planning board recommend that council adopt the ordinance and then empower or enable or direct the planning board to come up with a replacement ordinance in a reasonable timeframe.
I would second that.
Any further discussion of that?
Mr. O'Donnell has his hand up.
Oh, sorry. I'm so sorry, Owen. Please go ahead.
That's okay. I just put my hand up. I just really want to go back to first steps and basics and Jerry, in your opinion, is sprab as it is currently constituted basically illegal under MLUL?
It's exercising functions that it does, that it cannot legally exercise.
Okay. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Yeah. I mean, sprab itself is not illegal because it was created, I assume properly by, by mayor in pursuant to certainly to ordinance, but it certainly exercising functions that it has no power under the MLUL to, to exercise.
So then our recommendation to council would be to disband sprab as it is currently constituted and what, and allow planning department and planning board to replace, to come up with a suitable replacement with the functions properly delineated.
Yeah, correct.
Okay.
But just to be clear, Owen, it would be to, to develop, create an ordinance that, that then council would adopt. So the, so the, the appointments to sprab would still be by mayor and council.
Yes.
Not by planning board.
Right. No, absolutely. Absolutely. Thank you very much for that clarification, but that is what I meant to say without saying.
Bottom chair, we could add to Mr. Quinn's resolution of, of motion that if the new ordinance be in conformance with the municipal land use law.
Sure.
Correct.
Not sure we need to say that, but.
But that?
Maybe he knows what I'm saying.
Otherwise we're back where we started.
Never mind. Sometimes it's better to say less than more, right? Although you wouldn't know it in this town.
Madam, madam chair, not having a copy of the agenda in front of me, did the agenda include public comment for this meeting or?
You know, the, the, the agenda did not, did not specify, you know, specifically that there would be a public comment. We do have 15 people in attendance.
Also, Ms. Sacks has her hand raised.
Oh, excuse me. Thanks for that, Carrie. Councilwoman Sacks?
You, you're on mute.
I just want to say that I, I don't think it should take that long. I mean, we have, we did have a, the, the basics in our, you know, the basic ordinance just needs to be tweaked and there, you know, we've already discussed the essential work that needs to happen. And, you know, it, I just don't think it should take that long. And I, you know, I would just want to discourage, you know, and I don't know if we need to put a line in there, but by, I find that setting up task forces and work groups tends to, you know, create very lengthy processes that some, sometimes go far afield. And I, I just, I don't think we need to reinvent the wheel. We have the basics of what needs to happen. I think we know how it needs to be tweaked and, you know, I hope that it will happen quickly. So just wanted to say.
Yeah. Thank you for that. So I, I noticed that Mr. Bodikheimer just rejoined us. I know Nat that you had another meeting that you had to jump to. And so you have missed, I gather, I assume, most of the discussion and.
I'm sure that's true.
So, but we are, we have a motion on the, on the floor and a second.
But before I do a roll call, Mrs. Wilson, I'm sorry, Mr. Chow joined us late. Did you, did you join us around four o'clock, Phil?
Let's see, I joined about three forty.
Okay. So you missed a portion of the discussion, so I'm not going to include you.
But, but he can be included because yeah, this is not a, a, a hearing.
And what about Nat? I can include him too.
Yeah, as soon as he understands, yeah, as soon as he.
What, once he hears the motion.
And Louise, you do not want to open to the public?
Well, I was just going to, I, I am going to invite public comment because I just don't, not sure how I'd fall asleep tonight. Saying, I don't want to hear from the public. However, I'm sorry, Julie.
I just want to let you know, I have to go at four thirty.
Okay. Oh, okay. Six minutes. So here's what we're going to do. We have a motion on the floor and a second. So that Mr. Bodigheimer, Bodikheimer can know what he's voting on. If he chooses to vote, I'll ask that the motion be captured one more time orally. We will take the vote and then we will listen to public comment.
So, so, so the photo, as I understand, Louise would be subject to public comment and maybe revisions if we hear from any member of the public comments that we think are worthwhile.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I think just, you know, having a vote first without having some contingency probably does make.
Yes, yes. That's fair enough.
Actually, all hands are, no hands are raised at this time.
No hands are raised at this time.
Now we have a, now we do.
Okay. So Mr. Quinn.
No, we, I'm sorry. We now have two people.
Yes.
As soon as I said that, two hands went up.
Yeah. Mr. Quinn, so that we can get this vote in before Ms. Capizoli has to leave and, and with the understanding that it's possible after public comment that we may tweak things. Can you please restate your motion?
So my motion is that the board recommend that council pass the ordinance as introduced and enable or empower the planning board to come up with a new ordinance establishing, reestablishing sprab within the, in accordance with MLUL and after a discussion with staff. Anyone?
As quickly as possible.
As quickly as possible with all, with all due diligence.
With all deliberate speed or whatever.
With all deliberate speed. Thank you.
And I still second.
Okay. Carrie, let's have a roll call vote, please.
I think we brought over members of the public.
We did, but we're going to take this vote so that Ms. Capizoli can vote and then she's, needs to leave right away. We're going to take the vote and then hear from the public. And if we need to make changes after that, we can do so.
Thank you. Ms. Capizoli? Yes. Mr. Chow?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
I have a question. Do we know what is, I guess he has to vote directly again, because I think we kind of know what his position is.
He would have to, he, he.
Okay.
He gets to vote, he gets to vote tonight, so.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Ms. Sacks? Yes. Mr. Bodikheimer?
Yes.
And Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Julie. We'll, in a couple of weeks.
So I moved two individuals over. I have Joe Tax and Kip Cherry.
Okay, Ms. Cherry, you're up first. And I know this is an unusual sequence of events, but thank you for raising your hand. We're interested in hearing what you have to say.
Okay. Thank you very much. I, I disagree with what you're doing. I think you're throwing out the baby with the bathwater. I think that sprab provides a very important activity representing the community because they live in the community as opposed to staff and they are not paid. And they bring in expertise that staff don't have as well. And I realize that you're talking about restarting, restarting sprab, which I think is a long way around the barn. But, you know, things are very busy and I'm concerned that that's not going to happen. And I just think it's a very awkward way to proceed. Supposedly there are two violations that have not been specified in terms of what sprab does. I think that the issue of major or minor could easily be rectified. I, I wasn't even aware that they were making this judgment. Maybe that's relatively new. I don't know. But I think that it's very important to have sprab review the upcoming projects. And I think that your resolution really demeans sprab. It doesn't say anything about what sprab brings to the table. It refers to staff providing very helpful input. I forget the wording that's used, but it, it doesn't talk about anything that sprab is bringing to the table. So, oh, that the, the staff is bringing professional design and technical review. It sounds like from the, the resolution that sprab is kind of redundant. So anyway, I just want to express my, my concern and my desire for you not to do it that, the way you're doing it. Thank you.
Just to be clear, we did not vote on the resolution that was in front of the board. We voted on a motion based on our, on a consensus that was reached with input from the planning staff, from two attorneys. So it's not the same motion. And Kip, sometimes you just have to trust that I think we understand how important sprab is. I don't think anyone denigrated the work of sprab in either of the meetings that we've had on this. We view it as important, but it needs to conform to the letter and spirit of the law. And there can't be any perceived or actual conflicts of interest among its members.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Cherry, and, and thank you, Mr. Quinn. And just to repeat, we are, we are not adopting that resolution. We're, we are, we have approved a motion that was made by Mr. Quinn. So the gentleman identified as Joe Tax, I'm assuming I should not call you Mr. Tax?
Joe Small is my name. I
Okay.
At one point I put my, my email address and now that's how I always come up. I, I just wanted to draw the board's attention to several things, particularly since Councilman Cone is not here to, 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 to raise certain issues. One is that there's this representation that the sprab has been doing things that it can't do because it can't review design. And that relies on, on the, the memo of, of the council's counsel, Ms. Cecil, and also on the staff memo, both of which quote 10B dash two twenty-six. Only the paragraph that says what, what, what kind of review can be undertaken by the board or, or by sprab or by anybody. And it fails to quote in both of those memos, the 16 exceptions that the statute has in particular, item C, which talks all about how something fits with itself and fits into the community and fits into the terrain. If that isn't design review, I don't know what is. And I think the whole reason for that preliminary paragraph is to prevent the municipality and municipal officials and municipal bodies from being blamed for any malpractice by the professionals that come before the board. The professionals ultimately have to sign the applications and they can't have the excuse, the board made me do it and I only signed it because the board said I had to. I think that anything that may be blocked by the improper action of sprab can be passed up right now to the board. And Mr. Muller, I think I heard say that he could write a memo that said that could be done. So nothing can hinder the progress of current activities. And sprab is a board, a body that's existed for many years and on this extremely short notice to abolish a body that's been in existence so long because certain flaws are found with it now, I think is, 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 is not prudent to, you know, we've seen what's happened with the ADU ordinance when people didn't think ahead that there's a limitation of seven feet. And if, 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 if a ceiling is less than seven feet, it doesn't count as square feet. So now we have 1,800 square foot ADUs. There's no need to abolish sprab because anything that it may be doing that's wrong can be passed immediately to the board. And I think that's what, what David Cone, he, he, he's, he's alone and I don't understand. the, the David Cone, he, he, he's, he's alone and I don't understand why he's alone. But because I think council is being ill-advised by staff and by council inciting parts of statutes without the complete statute. And then they draw bad conclusions. That's what I have to say.
If I could just.
Thank you, Mr. Small.
If I could just make a a clarification about that introductory, and thank you for, for your comments, Mr. Small, about that introductory paragraph of section 226 and then the site plan standards that are after that. I've always read that introductory section as barring architectural review only. Certainly it doesn't bar site plan review. In fact, it's the beginning of a section which do, which has it, all these site plan standards that you've articulated. So I just wanted to make that clear as the way I, I've looked at that. And that's what the reference in the resolution was to, was to architecture review by SBRAB. When I, when the, uh, as I read the ordinance and, and the staff read the ordinance and we didn't, we didn't coordinate any responses on, uh, with respect to the memo that went out, um, that you can't do architecture review, but the job is to do site plan review as a job of staff and the full board. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Mueller. And I, I just want to reiterate that the, the intent here is, is not to erase SBRAB, but to, uh, correct the issues that are calling its work into question and to, um, uh, come up with, um, a, a good fix as quickly as possible, uh, and that if we were to try to move ahead with some kind of a suspension of SBRAB that enough people would have to step down from SBRAB such that it would not have a quorum. So, uh, we're, we're trying to, to, um, remedy the situation as quickly as possible. Keeping in mind that SBRAB's input to this board for many years, uh, uh, has been really, really valuable and nobody is looking to lose that permanently. Um, okay, so I think, I thought that there was one more.
Yes, Steve Gilbert, I've already moved him over.
Oh, okay, okay. Gilbert, hi.
Yes.
Hi, thanks. Um, you know, I'm speaking actually as a homeowner in Princeton who's gone before SBRAB and incurred the expense. Um, also speaking as a developer um, who really wants community input in their projects. I think SBRAB is very useful. Um, I just think it would be much more useful if it were earlier on. And so, uh, uh, in the process, you know, not just before going to planning board. Um, so I think the steps you're taking make a lot of sense. I think it's, it's a step toward, toward getting SBRAB to be a much more value. It's already valuable, but to make it even more valuable and, and work better for the community.
Uh, thank you very much. I think that point about earlier input is very valid. Mr. Mueller?
And, and Mr. Wood, that's a very good point. In fact, we've discussed that as one of the elements in the revised ordinance would deal with that and try to move SBRAB review up much earlier than it is now. So it would, because in fact, the way, the way it works now, it's so late in the process that plans have been fully engineered. It's, they're baked in, the developers tend not to want to make major changes, which are very expensive. So I think it's a very good point and one that will be included. Um, if I have any input in, in the, the new ordinance.
And we all hope you do. Okay, I'm, um, not seeing any additional hands raised for public comment, so seeing none, I will move that, I think, back over to panelists, close the public comment. We've taken a vote. Do any members of the board see any reason to revise, uh, the motion or reconsider? I'm not seeing any. Okay. Well, um, thank you very, very much. Thank, um, the public also, the.
Mr. La Place has his hand raised. I'm sorry.
Why am I not seeing that? Cause I, I seem always to be in the wrong, Mr. La Place does?
Yeah, I just, it's just a procedural question. I, I.
Well, I'm not even seeing it either on my screen or.
Can you hear me, Chair?
Go ahead.
Can you hear me? I was just going to say, staff will write up this motion, this, this, this motion that was taken this evening, this afternoon and send it to the mayor and council. I just wanted to make clear that we'll communicate that this afternoon.
Uh, I appreciate that. And, um, um, sensitive to, you know, some of what the public said, please, please make clear the value that this, uh, that, that SBRAB has had to this board. Um, and, and we have, uh, we're very keenly interested in helping to, um, frame the ordinance that, we're either framing ourselves or helping you frame the ordinance that replaces the one that they may repeal.
We, we will do our best considering that council is meeting in very soon.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
I move adjourned in the absence of Mr. Cohen. Uh, I move for adjournment.
Is there a second?
Yes, there is.
There, there are, there are a number. Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
For no one is opposed, uh, if there are, you're overruled. Okay. Thank you, everybody. I, I appreciate again reconvening today and good discussion. Bye now.
Thank you. Good night.